Testing one, two, three. This will be the March 21st, 2018 workshop meeting, followed by the regular council meeting.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a workshop meeting in the City Council of Satellite Beach, March 21st, 2018, approximately 6:15 PM. The reason for the workshop is to interview board applicants. At this time, we have a lot of applicants, 11 tonight, I believe. So, our handbook for applicants on boards says that if we know the individuals that sit on other boards, that we can, as a council, forego interviewing them. So, to save time, if these particular people are willing, Jeff, John, and Larry. John, you sit on, like, I think, every single board. So, we know you, does an incredible job. Jeff, you've been on it. Larry, I think you come at every meeting and so forth. So, for the good of the order and just so we have more time spent with the other applicants, do you mind if we say hello and thank you? And we know you.
Are we still under consideration?
Of course, yes.
Yes, okay. That's it. Go, see you at seven. No, okay. Get through here. And this is real simple. I guarantee you, I can ask if you would. When we call your name, just come up to the mic here. Make sure you speak into the mic. Just state your name. Tell us a little bit about yourself, why you want to be on the board, and then we'll ask you a few questions. And it's that easy. We vote as an agenda item tonight. They're usually one of the last couple of agenda items. You're welcome to stay. If not, you will be notified, okay? Okay. Steve Gilman?
Yes.
Please. I called Steve first. He wants to be Sustainability and Climate Ambassador, so therefore, it's different than the other positions that we're looking for. So, Steve, take a seat and just make yourself at home and tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in it.
Yes, Gilman. Interested in the Sustainability Board. I went to three ambassador meetings and witnessed those and getting more excited each time. I just moved to Satellite Beach, being a member for a job with BRS Technologies as an engineer. I have my master's in engineering, so I'm interested in possibly using that to help the group. I learned by the opportunity from Dave, I think he's the leader of it.
Lloyd.
He's my neighbor, so I walked by his house one day and he told me about it. I'm interested in that and, you know, climate change and all these threats. I could help save the environment.
Great. Thank you very much. The meetings, you have time to attend them? Obviously, you have. You've been coming to those ambassador ones. Okay. Questions from council? Steve, would you like to start?
I don't have any.
Okay. Mark?
Any particular direction you'd like to see the committee go or issues you'd like to see tackled in any way, Steve?
I think, I mean, one of my biggest passions is renewable energy, solar power.
Yeah.
That's, I think, I could help with.
Okay.
Any thoughts on the lagoon or any ideas on, I guess, what stands out with you the most from the Sustainability Board meetings that you have been? What are the directions that you like? And do you have anything that you think maybe they should go in a different direction? Have you had any thoughts on?
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of really a burn shot area, but in the runoff, instead of removing the chemicals. And one of the meetings, pretty masterful meetings, was about the buildings that are running, the leeway between the buildings and the beach. And that building, you know, raising the buildings out and having the garage underneath so the water could run off. I was a good idea.
And are you, are you on Sherwood? Do you live on Sherwood? What's your street? Are you on? Okay.
I live on the highway A-18.
Oh, okay.
Right by Little Ghosts.
Okay, so I'm kind of your neighbor too. I'm Dave's neighbor as well. Floyd, so, okay, sorry.
Okay, well, great. Thank you very much. I've seen you at those meetings and your input, and thank you for coming. Karen, I know it's a, it's an interesting board of all the boards that we've created in this city. That board right there has had, really, the biggest turnout of people interested in being on a board, which I really like. It's, you know, it's important. So, thank you. And again, you're more than welcome to stay. Our council meeting begins at eight and we'll do the process at seven, excuse me.
You'll feel like eight.
I'm sorry. You're right. It's overrated. Thank you. Okay. Next, we'll go into Karen Carmen. Yeah? Okay. We'll just see, I'm sure she'll be, okay. Let me just thumb through here a little more. Jeff Chastain, we got you. Thank you. John, we got you. Steve, we got you. Desiree? Thank you. Thank you. Tell us a little bit about yourself and also why were you interested in this board that we're trying, you know?
My name is Desiree Call, which is Satellite Beach. My husband whisked me away in the military and I just recently moved back about two years ago, so I'm wanting to get involved in the community again. I have a financial counseling background, so I worked with a lot of individuals on debt management and budgets. So, I've done that on a personal level and I also work for Junior Achievement, so I help educate people on their finances, students and individuals. So, this seems like a good fit for me. It's a way to get involved in my community. So, when I saw the Call to Action on Facebook, that was why I reached out. I haven't done anything to this capacity, but I think you're, you know, it would be nice to get involved and find ways to help you all with this deficit that you're going to be having in the future, possibly having in the future. So, that was why I wanted to get involved.
Thank you. Questions?
I don't have a question, but I would say thank you for applying. I think you are one of those examples of exactly what we're looking for is somebody with some new, fresh perspective, someone who's probably not so familiar with what we do all the time to bring that to the table. So, I look at that as a very helpful thing, a very good thing, and I hope that you come on and come with some great ideas and ask great questions. I think it'll be very helpful.
Just one question, Desiree, and welcome. Thank you for coming. Any nights that are a conflict for you? With, most of the meetings are at seven o'clock, never on Friday night, but Monday through Thursday.
Is there a post-schedule?
Six o'clock. Six o'clock.
Is there a post-schedule that you put out where you had that for a calendar and it would work?
Okay.
Great.
That's all I have.
Obviously, you grew up here, so you understand the character of our city and what's very important is, sorry, Larry. So, I grew up here as well, and it's going to be a fine balance of us trying to figure out how we deal with the financial side of it, but we need to maintain the character of our city as well without losing that. So, we're looking for really creative ideas on things that we can help. So, I want to make sure the focus stays on that and it's not just strictly drilling down the exact dollars and losing the things that make this city why we want to live here.
Yeah, I agree with that a whole part of me because that's one of the reasons when we retired from the military and we came off to Satellite Beach.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for applying, yes.
Desiree, thank you very much. I appreciate it. So, you are a satellite, like a few of us.
Yeah.
Some did better than others.
Yes. But thank you. We appreciate it again. We vote tonight later in the meeting. Thank you. That's it. Thank you very much. Kevin?
Yes.
Please. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Kevin Drucker. I am a transplant. So, I moved down about 10 years ago and a Satellite Beach resident for the last eight years. I currently work in budgets. I'm the finance manager at Rockefeller Collins Operations. So, we have about 800 employees in operations that I oversee the budgets for. I deal a lot with our capital, cost-benefit analysis when it comes to capital. And so, I saw an announcement on Facebook and wanted to become more community engaged and so I reached out.
Great. Thank you. Would you like to start?
Kind of the same general comment and question is, I mean, even being a transplant, you obviously came and chose here for a reason, and I'm assuming you understand the importance of the character and being good to our community, but we're really looking for some really good, new ways of approaching the budget. Do you feel, with your experience, it sounds like you might have a good approach as well?
Yeah, every year, every year, you know, as a corporation, we try to, you know, find efficiencies where they exist. So, and I did do a quick look online of the budget, you know, and it's similar to a corporate budget where there's a lot, you know, with payroll, you know, you've got your capital expenses and things like that. So, but yeah, I love this community, really appreciate all the services, you know, our police force and all those things. So, I want to do a hand help activity.
Thank you. One question before I go down the line here. You mark Citizens Budget Committee as number one, and obviously, that committee is going to last an X amount of time. Are you as equally committed, you have marked two here, to Pension Planning Board two? If that position is open, when the Citizens Budget Committee is finished?
I would be interested in that.
Great, okay. Thank you. Mark?
Just to, just to, just to like to hear your thoughts globally on what you saw in the budget. Any opportunities you see? I know you mentioned salaries and that sort of thing. Just, have you dived any deeper than that or just kind of got your foot wet a little bit?
I just got a flavor of it.
Okay.
You know, no, I mean, different departments, you know, I'm used to dealing with that. When I see a lot of numbers, I do tend to try to find where the opportunities are and I didn't look that close enough to gain any insight yet.
Okay. Good answer. Thank you, sir.
I just come and thank you for coming and I appreciate what you said about the services, obviously, that we have here. I think most residents here in Satellite Beach really play a big emphasis on our police department and our fire department. So, I like that you took that and look at that angle, and you too appreciate that. So, as you look at all the departments, obviously, that's one place you always got to take a look at and have a good balanced view. So, but I do appreciate you coming out. I'm glad you took a look at it.
And you're a Sherwood Avenue guy. I live on Sherwood. I live on Sherwood too. I know I saw somebody in.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Somebody with a Sherwood address on there.
Okay. Miley?
Millie.
Millie?
Millie?
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Good evening.
No, I'm not nervous.
Take it off, sorry.
Take it off. Easy as.
We're not judging. We're just listening.
Oh, I go first.
You go first. Tell us a little bit about yourself and.
My name's Millie Sims. I moved to Satellite Beach specifically for the location. I'm not sure if you noticed when I was here at previous meetings, but I am visually challenged. So, it was important to me to have a small enough community where it's not loud and busy, but small enough to where I can walk to everything and be comfortable in my surroundings.
You're doing great.
So, I recently decided that I wanted to become aware of what was going on in my community, started coming to the meetings, heard about the community that I'm trying to build. And I kind of first blush thought, gosh, would anybody take me? But I had a couple of weeks to think about it and I think if you're looking for somebody with fresh ideas, out-of-the-box thinking, I have to be an out-of-the-box thinker my entire life. I don't just live in one world. I live in a sighted world and a blind world. So, I had to adapt my entire life and try to fit in at the same time making creative solutions for myself. I pray about this.
You're doing great.
I'm not sure if words.
No, take a deep breath.
You're doing great.
We have plenty of time.
I'm sincere. I care about this community. I started coming out because I am concerned about the direction that it may be going as far as building along the beachfront. I'm concerned about things like sewage streams dumping to the lagoon and people wanting to bury our beautiful barrier reef. And I understand that the city has to make money and I want to know firsthand how that works and not be influenced by other people's opinions on the internet and especially when I don't see them here at the meeting. So, gosh, what's our question?
Perfect. Perfect. Okay. Mindy, would you?
Okay. Thank you for getting the courage to come up. I've been in your seat before and I had to, I applied for the Sustainability Board. It was my first board that I was on with Jeff and John. And I appreciate the courage to come up and do this, and I actually really loved your application. It was very, very honest and good. So, would you consider, if this board isn't a good fit for you, are there any other boards that you would consider joining?
I would absolutely consider anything that I could do to contribute to this beautiful city. Absolutely. Any way I can help, any way possible. I don't limit myself and say I can't do anything until I try it. So, I'm just praying that you do the same.
Of course. Okay, yeah.
Mark?
Well, Millie, thank you for coming out. Good presentation. What I picked up from this was that you're a person that's looking for information, just trying to get some new ideas and thoughts incoming and also trying to express new ideas and thoughts coming out. So, I think it's, I think it's a good fit with the city, but we just got to find a board that works for you. So, I'm just glad you're here and we'll make something happen out of this, in my opinion anyhow.
Well, thank you for coming. You're welcome.
I really don't have any questions other than I would just say thank you for coming out. I think, you know, our city is really based on its citizens and its volunteers. I mean, that's, that's how this works. And having you involved and being here firsthand, and I have noticed that you've been here at some of the city council meetings, and I appreciate that because you're right, that sometimes it's better to get the story straight up front, being there, you hear it without all the added to it when you get it from the internet and other places. So, I think that's great. I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you want to be involved and I'm sure we'll find a place for you without a doubt.
If I could be getting a volley mailing on my street, I'd be like, I'm all over that.
Me too. I would love it.
Great, great.
Thank you very much for doing it, and I like new ideas. And the reason is, there's some of us here, I know Mark and I, we've looked at almost 20 years' worth of this budget. And so, our mind might not be as free and as open as some of it because we look at the same thing for quite a number of years. So, we're very much interested in new ideas. And thanks, appreciate you coming because we want those new ideas, okay? And thank you. Okay. Larry, we're skipping, correct, right here? Okay? And then we come back to the new ones, right? Okay. If I miss anybody, let me know. Okay, I have four new ones, and let me just go over Cindy. Okay. Tristan? Okay. Just want to make sure I get it. Kathleen? Thank you. Andrew? Great. Is there anybody else here in the audience that I missed?
You got them. One second.
Okay. Great. Cindy, you're on. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Mary. And it's funny when you're out of context. Yeah. But normally, I'm in a ponytail and either being dragged down the street by my dogs or something else. I'm new relatively new to Satellite Beach. I moved here in November of 2015. Love living here. I have a very different background than probably a lot of your other applicants. My career role has been a leader in marketing for large corporations. I've constantly changed where I'm not having the energy sucked out of me by a large corporation and I'd like to spend some time getting back and doing other things. I think that my skill set where I can help and be beneficial in my career warrants matter what you say and how you say it matters. And so, you know, constituents and communication tools that you, I think with this upcoming budget and challenge, need to communicate some tough information. And I think if you're clear and if you can adequately outline the features and benefits and sort of what's in it for a citizen versus what's in it for the city and balance that, I think that's where I can help you present information and make sure the facts are interpreted the way you want them to be.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I'm.
Appreciate it.
I have separate questions.
Great.
First of all, again, thank you for coming and volunteering, looking at the tentative dates, that there are meetings and it's going to be okay with you and your schedule.
I have to double check it, that's all. I currently working at Ford Institute of Technology, so I do have some flexibility, but I shouldn't get problems for you and the central appointments I have.
That's all I had. Thank you, Mark.
With your background, Cindy, I'm always kind of curious as to what do you see as the most effective form of media or communication, however you want to put, for getting information out to the general public on an event or a process like this? Any ideas?
I think it's going to take a combination of communication tools. I think you've seen probably rather than just through Facebook. I don't know where you are with other media. I don't know, I haven't checked for your Twitter feed or things like that, but there's folks that are comfortable with digital information because it's easy and they'll read it on their device of choice. And then, I'm not as familiar with what local publications there are. Sometimes I get a newspaper in my driveway sometimes I go. So, you know, it's just a matter of knowing what the resources are and getting the appropriate communications. I mean, we live in a bullet-in society. We take things in quickly. Some folks are comfortable reading paragraphs, some are. So, I think it's a mix of things that will help make the message have the impact that you want it to.
Okay, so, I would take it from based on what you've said, that you're pretty comfortable with crafting messages and that sort of thing based on what needs to go out?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
So, obviously, you've heard the other question. So, for me, what I'm looking for in somebody on the community, what I would like to see is obviously someone that cares about the character of the community and understands that our, you know, when we talk about salaries are always the biggest draw on any company, but we would really love, we do not want to do anything to any of our employees. So, we really want creative approaches to cut the budget without hurting the people that work for us because they are what make our community as important and beautiful as it is. And so, that's super important. So, we want thinking out of the box and different ways, contracts or just, I want to dive into it, but really start thinking about what you guys do at your local companies. Can you hear me, Larry? Am I talking loud enough?
Almost.
Okay. So, as long as it's important to me, do you feel that those are important or are there other things? Of course, you wouldn't tell me, no.
No. I've had to go through budget reductions with some of my companies and so, nobody likes it when it impacts their team and people personally. So, it's, it's great when you can go through line items and say, I think there's another vendor that can deliver a success or how can I, you know, shave 25% in my work. I definitely understand that sensibility, but it's horrible when you have to look someone in the eye. Their position is being owned and it's primary. So, I appreciate your sensitivity around that.
Question might be a little different. Why did you move to Satellite Beach?
I moved to Satellite Beach for a position and ironically, my position was eliminated due to private equity mergers. So, I love living in Satellite Beach and found a way through a new role with FIT, which is a lot tougher than what I've done that allows me to live here because I love living in Satellite Beach.
What's it, I'm just interested in, I'm different. My parents brought me here back in 1950 and I stayed. And I was always interested why people move into our town. What are those reasons that are out there that makes you say, God, I want to live in Satellite Beach, different than being north to the county or someplace else?
Yeah, it's super easy. I remember when I came down here, I set the position, so how I knew about the Melbourne area was having a vintage airstream restored by somebody who lived here. So, I would come down to check on things or do things and or go camping. And when you start driving around A-18 and other things, we said, wow, we think we could live here. And that's like, well, how is something going to fall into place that would allow me to come here? So, when a recruiter called in, said I have an opening in Melbourne, it was like, I know where that is, you know, why am I doing this? So, when I went to look for housing, we go over the causeway. How do you say it?
Panida.
Panida.
Panida?
Yeah.
That's the way it sounds like to me. If somebody else keeps saying, I'm saying, right. In Satellite Beach, we loved it, just the way the city's laid out, the emphasis on green space, having people say hello whenever they're walking by. It's just a wonderful community, over the years.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Tristan? Thank you. How are you doing?
Good. How are you?
Great. Before you start, I'm going to ask one question.
Sure.
Thank you. Lenore? The address is Satellite Beach on Lockhead?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Please, tell me a little bit about yourself.
I'm qualified.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because a lot of Tortoise Island or some of it is not in Satellite Beach. And we've done it, yes. Only a very small portion of Tortoise Island is in Satellite Beach. And we've had that happen. That's, I just wanted to make sure before we got into it any farther. Please tell us a little bit about yourself and.
I just moved back down here. I went to school at Georgia Mason University outside of DC. I graduated with an econ degree and I'm in data and data analytics. And I'm now pursuing a, not a bachelor's, actually, computer science. And I just wanted to apply my econ degree and see how I could use that in city management. And I saw budget and I went, okay, why not? I'll apply. I think I bring a slightly different view. I'm younger, I believe, than the majority of the other applicants, so I think I'm 22. I want to be involved and I think it's a far different viewpoint than someone the other applicants. I may not have the same level of expertise. I don't, I've never had a corporate position. The highest I've gotten is I've managed 20 staff at a management company, but.
Great. Thank you very much for applying.
I like the idea where you say you'd like to bring a different view. Along those lines and now that you've been here to Satellite Beach, what do you see different here than maybe you've seen, especially up in the DC area and places like that? I mean, what jumps out at you?
Well, I just love driving here. People respect speed, but just a general, no, I almost wish I could live in.
I may not have the same level of expertise. I don't, I've never had a corporate position. The highest I've gotten is I've managed 20 staff at a management company. But, but I'm proud.
Great. Thank you very much for applying.
I like the idea where you say you'd like to bring a different view. Along those lines and now that you've been here to Satellite Beach, what do you see different here than maybe you've seen, especially up in the DC area and places like that? I mean, what jumps out at you?
Well, I just find driving here, people respect speed. But, just to channel more. No, I almost wish I could have lived in Torres Island and I lived on a, you know, I live, it's very separate from Satellite Beach, but I wish I could walk to more stores where I'm located. And even, you know, if I lived quite to the end of Torres Island, I wish I could walk somewhere on that side. And I wish there was a little more mixed zoning in this community.
All right.
No real questions, Tristan. I'm glad you came out because I think you, I think you kind of hit it on the head. You do bring with this, with your econ degree, probably a new approach, maybe a different look at governmental services as it relates to the public and balance and all of that. It's kind of like what Cindy talked about and I talked about with her about messaging and that sort of thing. So it'd be interesting to see how you would mix with the group and not just be, I know economics because I've had macro and micro and it was very painful because I can't imagine doing a whole, yeah, it's a lovely subject, yeah. Yeah. But mixing that with public messaging is different. So it could, I mean, you could bring a lot of real good intellect to it, but you'd have to turn that into practical application. So again, that's just a compliment. So I have no issues, no questions. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry, timeout.
There you go, yeah.
I know, go ahead.
All right. So can I maybe lose my, oh, okay. So would you consider possibly serving on another board if perhaps this didn't work out for you?
I would. I am planning to not stay in Satellite Beach past 2020.
Oh.
Hopefully, so I don't know how long these board positions require, but...
What year is it? Okay, so you said you moved back to Satellite Beach. Is that, did you, you lived here?
Yes, I graduated from Holy Trinity.
Okay.
In 2013. I moved down here in 2008.
Okay.
So, you know, I left four years, got a degree, changed that.
And were you in satellite the whole time growing up?
Yes.
Okay. And do you, have you looked at our budget at all yet? Have you seen anything?
I have not. I'm looking at the fees you charge for your tax courts and stuff like that. And viewing that the majority of the communities don't have tax courts and they pay larger amounts, I think we could afford to raise those fees a little, especially when the competition is Kiwi Tax Club, which has significantly higher fees, especially since it takes a significant amount of time to go across the bridge. I think, you know, you have a bit of a geographic knowledge here. So if they vote to cut your tax, Kiwi Tax, there are other ways to make up for that shortfall.
All right. Good job.
Any other questions? Thank you. Kathleen? Thank you.
So I'm Kathleen Marner. I moved down here on Maryland 15 years ago to regard county. Lived in the Atlantic. Moved to Satellite Beach three years ago specifically for my children, for the high school and circicide for the elementary school. I will say that I have never in my life felt a community as we feel here. And that's the main reason for wanting to be a part of this, to make sure that that heart stays.
Thank you. So you, when you moved, I'm going to ask a question to you. So you moved here because of the schools and the way the community fit your need?
Yes, brought in here later.
I have nothing more things.
Was the move worth it? Outside of the schools, are you pretty pleased with the community? Just because we don't control the schools, obviously, but are you pretty pleased with the community? Any thoughts or ideas just in general, Kathleen?
Do you guys remember anything special that happened January 8th this year or last year?
That's why you look familiar. You have, your son, was he the firefighter, the fire, honorary firefighter? Yes.
Okay.
That's why, okay.
Okay.
So I'm very familiar with all the services that are offered through this great city. I do not have any budget experience, but I do run a household. So that takes budgeting. And hopefully I can help us with new ideas, new approaches and, you know, keep everything we've got and maybe plus without losing.
Two questions though. How is your son doing? Is he?
Easy.
Good, okay, good. Other question is if this particular board doesn't work out for you, because we do have several applicants, would you be interested in any other boards that we have available?
I have a look to see what other boards are available. But yes, now he's doing well, I'm able to actually step out into the community and help.
Okay. All right, that's good to know. Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
That's it?
No, we got one more mic.
Go on.
Andrew. Please. It's in this packet on the back. Andrew, welcome. Thank you.
I am Andrew Schler. I've lived here my entire life. I'm not a big Facebook user, but someone sent me a message service with this invitation and it looked interesting. I have a lot of time on my hands now, so I'm anxious to get involved and see what's going on. I have a lot invested in this city and I plan to stay in this city a long time. And that's my opportunity, I think, to get involved and see how I can lead a legacy or an impact or help us to get on the right track, stay on the right track, whatever it is. So it seems like interesting. Budget committee seems like just a few short meetings over a few months and we'll see how that goes and other things I can get involved along the way.
Great, thank you.
I would just thank you again for coming and volunteering your time and being here that you've been here that long, as some of these other folks have been here that long. Is there anything that jumps out you that budgets have affected or not done well with in all your years here that you think could use improvement or you liked that worked out really well?
I think that some of the zoning has affected some of the commercial development along the everything corridor. I mean, I miss the bowling alley. I miss the constructed fried chicken a lot. I wish we could work out some other things to encourage that a little bit. I like the walkability that's coming along and, you know, I think that we should probably improve our reach to access to the beaches. We own a big portion of the beach, so getting more people involved in that. I don't have an axe to grab. I didn't recognize with me here anything that I am not as enamored with, the police and the fire, as many people are in the city. I think I'm not enamored on that. But, you know, I recognize that the budget's going to be a lot of labor. That's always what it is, right? So I'm hawkish on budgets. I recognize the difference between wants and needs and, you know, I think that instead of raising taxes, we should find a way to try to live within our budgets and where they're going to go. So that's a perspective all over and along, I think. But, I mean, I love this city. It's my city. I'm a product of this city, so it doesn't matter what, we wouldn't even harm it in any way, right? And to only make it a nicer place or nicer, better place for people to come out.
Thanks, Cindy.
Okay, so you grew up here. Satellite graduate? No.
Kindergarten, circicide, Aurora, Satellite.
Do you have any children in school here?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay. So you mentioned the police and the fire and how you feel about that. So they obviously are a big chunk of our salaries. Have you really looked into what our fire department does as far as like the services that they offer outside of your standard?
I know there are a lot of services that are offered and I haven't looked at like their stats, their statistics, I guess. How many calls they do, what, and how many fires they put out, how many people they save, and what other, how many sick calls they cure and things like that. So, I mean, I'm part of this exercise, I'm sure we will, you know? And I think this is a great opportunity in that regard to educate myself a little bit more what all the services are.
Yeah, I was just outside of just this board to just maybe investigate a little bit more into what they provide and what the police do as well because I grew up here. And when I ran for council, I met with the chief and I had my share of trouble as a teenager and my dislike for the Satellite Beach Police Department and all the tickets that I would get and so I have a completely new perspective on that side, but there is money that needs to be cut. And I do like that you have a pragmatic approach, which is it can't always be happy and go lucky. So they give your honesty on that and I guess that's it. I guess I have more comments and questions. I'm sorry about that.
Right.
Good interview. Thank you for coming out, Andrew. The one thing, you put it down here, so I'm going to ask what it was, is you said you're a prior business owner. What was, what was the area of the business?
I have a property from 2009 through 2015.
Did not know that.
Sold it to Anna who owns it.
Did not know that, okay. So you've got a strong real estate background then? Okay, that'll work.
Great. Andrew, thank you. The process is, it's an agenda item towards the end that we'll discuss. Okay? Thank you. Real quick to council, talking to Courtney, it has down here five members. One of the questions she said to me, I said, how many really? And she said, I'd like to stick around five, but five to seven would be manageable. So I'm just throwing that out to let everybody know, okay?
Okay.
So your thoughts?
We definitely had some really good candidates tonight, Mr. Speaker.
Appreciate everyone coming out.
Well, I mean, just, I'll throw that out because it's a discussion for later when we get to it, but that way you could be thinking of it.
Okay.
Any other business? Everyone, thank you very, very much. To those we didn't interview, thank you anyway. We know you and appreciate you coming. And we'll start our council meeting very shortly here. Thank you. This meeting's adjourned. Okay, everyone, let me... Pretty good. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, March 21st, 2018, approximately, excuse me, 7:00 PM. Please join Councilman Osmer for a moment of silence and the pledge.
Please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. And the pledge, please? I pledge to the citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That was awesome.
Thank you, everyone. We're going to move around our agenda slightly. I will entertain at this time, citizen comments. I'll take citizens first and then non-citizens. And this is for non-agenda items. So the floor is open. Non-agenda items. Here are none. I'll move on. At this time, we're going to go directly to agenda items seven and eight, the recognition of police department volunteers and the annual awards. Chief, you're on.
Thank you. I don't know, how about if I stand here as that? I hate to turn my back to you both, but I want to make sure. Thank you, everybody there, City Council, I appreciate it. As anybody that's known me more than five minutes knows that this is one of my very, very favorite nights. It's probably one of my very favorite things to do is to talk about people I work with and have the ability to tell their accomplishments. And of course, the other thing I really like to do is talk with a captive audience, so it works out really well. I'm going to do the best I can to keep it a shorter talk. We have a lot of really, really good things to talk about, a lot of great accomplishments and some first-time awards, so I really want to give them their due. I'm going to start with our volunteers and their service pins. Here's the service pins and we have Paul Cannon, five years. Thank you. You know what? Do we want to do the, all the pictures afterwards? Yeah. Let's just, yeah, let's do, we'll do all the pictures afterwards so we can go through it faster. Fran Wright for 10-year pin. Congratulations. I see you're flanked by your daughter and daughter-in-law. Thank you so much. Pennington, it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
I've been George David Munn.
Well, that's right. And yeah, I'm going here in for Jean Bowden. Jean, I tell you, there's a lot of people that don't work their whole career at one place for 20 years. So to volunteer with us for 20 years, I just can't hide much. We appreciate it.
I put up with a lot.
But I hope that we have a lot to live with about that. All right. Again, we have, you'll probably hear me say this several times, we have something that we have never had happen before. We have someone that won our volunteer of the year and also won the school crossing guard of the year at the same time. Now, that's pretty cool when you volunteer two different things, doing two different things and you're the person of the year for both. And that's George and Jean Bowden. Congratulations, Chief. Thank you. I just want to say just a couple of things about George because this will give you a really good idea of just how dedicated this guy is. So we had a problem with our ATV. It's older and it was breaking down. So he said, would you mind if I took it and tinkered with it and see if I could get it working? So I said, no problem. He went to public works and said, would you mind if I use some of your stuff here because I'm working on city property, I'm volunteering? And the mechanic said, sure, no problem at all. So he's in there and he's working kind of off to his side and people come in and they have problems with the issues. The mechanic says, I really can't get to it right now. George said, well, hold on, let me see if I can help you with that. Next thing I know, he's volunteering for the public works department. He gets our ATV back together. Not only that, but while he's doing all that, he puts our entire bike patrol program together. He does our entire bike patrol program, puts that together. We got new bikes, pedal bikes for our bike patrol program. He put the training together, researched the bikes, made, I mean, made a full-on presentation and he just did everything. And then said, oh, by the way, I've got all the training covered for the people who can ride them so they can do it and be safe and all that kind of stuff. I'm like, holy cow, you know, and that's, and I could go on and on and on. But this is just an example of why he is both our volunteer of the year and school crossing guard of the year. Because when you're talking about school crossing guard of the year, the parents love him. He knows the kids, he knows their names, where, who's come out, who hasn't. The parents will walk up, have you seen Sally? Oh, she was, you know, hasn't come out yet, but I've seen, you know, little Joey and whoever. I mean, folks, that's incredible when you have someone that knows them like that and it really just does a great job for us. So George, thank you so much. Now we have a retirement and that is our canine master, Andrew Steve. Steve's over here. Sergeant Steve Owens was our canine officer for nine years. And with the generous donation from Ed Andre, he purchased a canine master for the city. And we ultimately then selected Steve to be our canine. And I'll tell you what, Steve did absolutely a fantastic job. The selection of the dog is important, but the selection of the person is just as important and the match is incredible. And they blended, they did incredible work. I could go on and on about the drugs and the guns and the money and all the stuff that they did. I could go on about all of the things they found, but I just, the one thing I got to tell you that was incredible is he gets called to the Walmart area for an attempted robbery and with a handgun. So once we were short, they get there and they call for the dog, the dog is tracking. So the dog is going back and forth under a building, right? Commercial building. and they couldn't find the gun, that's what they were trying to find. So, all of a sudden, he kept looking out, and the dog is alerting that it's somewhere here, and it's like, "There's no way", right? So, he finally says, "Look, I know my dog", so he tells the supervisor, remember, "We need to get a ladder and check the roof". Well, you can imagine the laughs he got, like, "Really, check the roof? Oh, 'cause your puppy's telling me to check the roof, really?". Honestly, right? So, he wasn't getting any traction, so he went and got a ladder himself, and said, "Just to make myself feel better". He puts the ladder up, flies up there, and all he does is that the gun has not been thrown up on the roof of the building, and the dog knew it, and smelled it. I mean, I don't know, I could tell you a lot of stories about how good he is, I'm not sure he was any better than that. So, he is retired, he's home sleeping right now, probably.
You think he's vacationing.
Right, yeah, he's using his laptop as a vacation. And everybody knows athletes, so I'm just gonna say, what do we do with the dog when they retire? And what we do is, we technically sell the dog back to Steve for a dollar, so that the dog becomes a family pet and stays with him for the rest of his life. And so, he's home now, being a family pet. And we now have Amber, who is our new Canine Officer, the new Canine, who's only about 18, 19 months old, and just a thing for citizens who's scouting, we're looking forward to her taking us to the next level, but I tell you what, it's gonna be real difficult, but with Steve supervising that program now, it's really gonna do well, so. Welcome to ask her retirement. I just wanna read this one part, it just says on his little plaque, it says, "You'll be missed, wish you a happy life in retirement playing with your ball". That's all he ever worked for, with a ball. And I thought, "If I could motivate other employees..." Don't work on that. So, if you were to present this to ask her for us, and put it up in this little dock uh... Now, while we're here, the reason, one of the reasons that Steve is up here still is because he got promoted to Sergeant. Steve did so well, not just with the dog, but so well with mentoring other people and the younger officers, and handling calls, and dealing with the public. He is just as sharp and as squared away as they get, folks, and it's just awesome. And he went through the process, there is a rigorous process, evaluations, oral boards, and a very, very difficult test, and he did very well, came out number one. All our folks that took it did well, but Steve did come out number one, and he was promoted, and honestly, I can't be more proud of him. He came to us from Locklich, and he's been here for, what, nine, eleven years? Eleven, whatever, I was gonna say eleven. The dog was nine years, you're 11 years, that's right, I got it. So, we're really just excited for Steve to take the next step in his career, and that is now to be a patrol supervisor, run a squad, and protect the city at night. And I can promise you, when you're out, when you're sleeping, and Steve's out working, then you can sleep well, because he knows what he's doing, he's gonna make sure that everybody's doing all right, and so we're very proud of him. Probably hiding in the background somewhere. Don Trabbell is receiving an award that we have not given out. I've been here 30 years, Leonard's been here 30 years, and I don't know that we've given this out. We have the, we have this award in our procedures, right? We have the ability to give you an award, the award's unidentified, but no one's ever gotten this award. And Steve, Don is the first one to get that because of the incredible things he does. And again, just one story that I think will summarize it, is he was, heard about a young kid who has cancer, and his family was dealing with trying to get a Jacuzzi-type tub in the bathroom for him for after his treatments, because his bones get so sore that he really needed that warm, that Jacuzzi, that motion. So, Steve went over there, Steve, I keep saying Steve. So, Don goes over to talk to him, right, and come to find out that, he said, "Well, you know, when we see by and help you, they have the tub, they just couldn't get it installed". So, he takes on the role, and not only does he help him, but he's called getting contractors, electricians, plumbers to come in, all of them donating their time. He went out and shopped for all the stuff, and he's going in his own time, folks. You go in, you get the whole thing set, then he finds out that the nomads are here, so he hooks up with them to get them to do the tile work and some other things they couldn't get done. Because this mom was traveling, or his dad traveled, and he just wasn't home a lot to be able to get it done. He did as much as he could, he was home, he had to work for the family, and just, that's one of several stories that I can tell you about the stuff that he does for people off duty. I mean, he will go to a hall and find that someone needs something, and say, "If you don't mind, I can come back tomorrow and help you with it", and he'll come back tomorrow, you know, off duty and play clothes, and help put up a door, and help fix something for people that just don't have the means or the ability. And to have that in your community is incredible, to have it, to be able to work with it is incredible to see. And he never wanted any recognition for it, I don't have to find out that many people that tell me, you know, me doing. But we have this tribute for you, Andrew, Pen, if you want to, you want to say anything, you can. No, sure. It's a community service award, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, because I basically just summarized it, but it's just, it's a pleasure to work with you, it's a pleasure to see how you may have in the community and what you do for everybody. I just wanna thank you for all of us in the community, thank you very much. Sean, Sean LeWard. Sean is our Dispatcher of the Year, telecommunications officer of the year, and if you've ever spent five or 10 minutes in a communication center, a comm center, dispatch center, when something bad is happening, you would not believe that one human being can actually accomplish all the things that they do. I mean, you're talking about structured fire, crashes, he's dealt with suicides, attempted suicides, all of it, and it's all right now. You're sitting there, you're on the radio, dealing with traffic stops, the normal stuff, and then all of a sudden the phone rings, 911 rings, and someone's talking about a suicide, or someone's talking about an attempted suicide, or shotgun fired, or, you know, a child in distress, or any number of things. We've had water rescues, all of this in just the past year. And to know that someone can view those acts, switch gears instantly, give all the information to the person, get them to the right place for help, get officers on the way, give them the information they need and where they need to go, all while answering the phone, because 900 other people are calling about the same thing, because of cell phones and things. Oh, and in the middle of that, somebody's taking a traffic stop, and then somebody's front window, wanting to report their puppy's missing. I mean, I'm telling you, all at the same time, and it's incredible. And he's just, he's a machine. I mean, if we could clone him, I think we would do that, because, and not only that, he's got, that's just great computer science. So, I thought of all that, anything to do with a computer system, a cat system, or anything, he can do. It's just, it's like, again, it's like having two people in one, and it's just incredible. I mean, he processed 242 emergency calls in 2017. When I say emergency, I'm not talking about the modern, more day-to-day, I'm talking about serious emergency calls. Folks, everybody's trying to do the right thing, and they call, and when they call, you've got to answer every one of those 911 calls. Every one, because in the middle of it, "Is this about the structure fire? We've run away. Is this about the structure fire? Run away". That 12th one might be, "I'm having a heart attack, and you better deal with it, you better deal with it right, you better deal with it right now", and he does. Now, we have the Hartman Flag Award for DUI arrests, which is John Housman. John, come on up. This award, as you can imagine, is dedicated to Matt Hartman and Phil Flatch, who were towed into line and beaten by a drunk driver. So, we, in their honor, we offer this award, and John Lummy Award with 15 DUI arrests for the year, and I tell you, removing an intoxicated driver from the road is incredible, because we all know how dangerous they are, we know firsthand how dangerous they are, and to have someone out there that is doing it, and is doing it well, and making good, solid cases, is impressive. And the things that I hear about, not only his cases, but how he treats people, and he understands that what he's dealing with most of the time are really, really good people at their very worst moment. And that's exactly how he treats them, he treats them as very good people, very decent people, that just, they mistake it's their worst moment, and he treats them with respect. And I've had people that will come up to me, you know, when I'm someplace else, not working, if I know who I am, and they will say that, you know, "I was arrested, and you changed my life by the way you treated me, and treated with respect", and folks, I'm not sure that anyone would ask for something like that, so congratulations. Next, we have our Civilian of the Year, which is Barbara Holland. Where's Barbara? Here she is. This is another award that we have not given out before, but Barbara was just so incredibly deserving that the award's free for name, we should just name it, the Barbara Holland Award, because, I mean, goodness gracious, you know, it's incredible the stuff she does. You know, she does a few jobs really for us. She's the Assistant Volunteer Coordinator, plus our Accreditation Manager. And people have heard me say this several times, that is two completely different worlds. I mean, the Accreditation Manager, you're collecting paperwork and documents, and entering, and data entry, and it's all computer, by yourself, with, you know, with screens. And then you transition to, people come in and talking to people, and dealing with people, and their issues and their problems, and their good and their bad, and scheduling events, and, you know, and then you go back to the same company. You know, and you can find good data people, you can find good people, people, right? But to find someone who could do both like this is just incredible. So, she, she just transitions and is so caring about everybody. The volunteers will pay, all the people sitting here will pay. I mean, when we have meetings, she makes things to bring to me, just because she doesn't do enough of the work that she's gonna do stuck at home. She just is just an incredible person, and the constant positive feedback I hear about what she does, she just is absolutely well-deserving of our Civilian of the Year, and we're very proud to have her, very, very proud. All right, what we have next? Our Officer of the Year, Anthony Holland. Come on up. It's gonna sound like a broken record, but I've got the truth. Again, I've got pages and patients of things that I could talk about, about why Anthony Holland is our Officer of the Year, but I'll just tell you a couple of things. First of all, he was our Officer of the Year when he was working on the road three years, three times he was Officer of the Year while he was working on the road. So, he gets transitioned to a brand new job, whole other work, right? Now, you're not in a car, driving around, stopping, writing tickets and all that, but now you're handling complex cases, things you've never dealt with, everything from a child sex case, all the way up to fraud cases, to blue collar, white collar crimes, and all different stuff. And again, in Satellite Beach, we don't have a blue collar division, we don't have a fraud division, we have a Valerie Blue and an Anthony Holland division, that Commander Hodges is owner here, that Commander Hodges supervises. They are all of those things. I mean, you pick up a case, like I said, and you're dealing with a debt, and then five minutes later, you're dealing with internet debt. I mean, it's just, it's incredible. But probably the most impressive thing about Anthony Holland is the dedication. You know, you can find people that work really hard when they're not working, but to find people that work really hard when they're not at work, and people are willing to come in, and one example I'll give is, he was, there was a suspect he was just wanting to catch, and he comes into the Commander Hodges office, and he said, "Hey, Commander, would you mind if I work on Saturday? I'll take one of the days off, you know, I need to, but, during the week, but I wanna work on Saturday, so I can come out in the afternoon and just spend the whole night trying to find this guy, 'cause he just needs to go to jail, he's a bad guy". And I was like, "Won't you help?". So, sure enough, 10 hours waiting for him, just getting ready to go home, drive about 3:00 in the morning, and sure enough, he sees the suspect come, and he's like, "Oh", after 10 hours of just waiting, turns around, "Hey, can you jump out of the car and take off?". Well, that's a mistake, I'm wrong, he snatched him up pretty quick. And that's just the kinda stuff he does. Nobody, we could, you know, he could've just filed the case in the state attorney's office, and the warrant comes out, right, and he eventually gets arrested, but that's not what he does. He makes the case, and he goes the case, and he wants that person to be held responsible. And he did that when he was on the road, and he did it with the desert detectives, and every time Commander Hodges walks in my office, and he mentions either one, either Valerie or Anthony Holland, it's just to talk about how incredible he is, and how lucky he is, and how lucky we are. So, he is, and for very good reason, our 2017 Officer of the Year. The case I was talking about, he seized 300 grams of marijuana, heroin, LSD, THC oil, $1,600, and a firearm, all from one case. And that's, and that's, folks, you know, it's here, but you don't really know where it is unless you're him, because he just stole the whole ball, because, I'm just telling you, if you ever do anything, he knocks on your door, just give up. I promise you, just give up. If Detective Blue wants to interview you about something, just confess to it all right now. Guarantee you that, I guarantee you that. Let's see, we have Life Saving Award. John Housman and Matt Penn. John and Matt, come on up. You guys get this. I knew the pin was involved in one of these ones. So, these two gentlemen are working, and the rec, Kathy, rec center, a woman is at the rec center, and she collapses. Which just so happens, there's a doctor nearby, so the doctor starts compressions, but there's no heartbeat. Matt's there in less than a minute, less than a minute from when the 911 call was received, and he is dispatched, probably by Sean, because, you know, he's working all the time, but Mary's our dispatch supervisor, and she's here, and she supervises those people, and when that call comes in, he's there in less than a minute, and he goes in, brought his AED with him, and immediately started with the training, and pulled the pad out, checking for a pulse, there was no pulse, put it on there, advised a shot, he cleared everybody, stepped back, shot, still no pulse. Now, John comes in, he gets there, he takes over compressions for the doctor, now they're working at hand, and still no pulse, and advise another shot, another shot gets there, our fire rescue get there, and a heartbeat starts, and the person ends up coming around, and we got a call from the fire department later that night, that she was sitting up in the ER, in the bed, sitting up that night. Folks, if you're not there, and you don't, if you're not there in time, and you don't do the right thing, and have the right equipment, that's not gonna happen. And that's just the, that's just the kinda dedication that they do. So, we have a pin for them, and I wanna mention one other thing, this is the second time the best save a life, the second time. So, if you're sitting there, you're really in good shape, but you're gonna have to follow him out to the parking lot, right, and hang out with him. But folks, on behalf of the community, and of course, that particular woman for this case, congratulations, but thank you very much. Okay. Mariposa Awards, Detective Valerie Blue and CID Commissioner Assistant Patty Knob, you guys, come on up, please. Is that trying to turn to the good side? Well, we were talking about that. We don't have anyone to put it on, right? So, why are they here? Well, I mentioned several things about Detective Valerie Blue already, but this particular reason, the Mariposa Awards is for just an outstanding contribution for a particular case. The particular case I'm talking about was a child sexual abuse case, and the sexual abuse on this child started when she was 10 years old, and it was by her stepfather and her biological mother, who fostered this, she allowed this, and this was going on for years and years and years, to the point where they even invited her friend, who was a school teacher, who also was a part of this kind of stuff. So, they worked, and when I talk about working as a team, you talk, you know, Detective Holland wasn't there at the time that was, Rob mentioned, he was retired. But Detective Rob mentioned Valerie took that case. But the beautiful thing about having somebody like Patty is, it's like having a third detective, because they can focus on going out in the street and doing the things they need to do, because they know that Patty is gonna get subpoenas and phone records, and know what she's looking for, and know how to get them, know how to get them right now, and know what to say to get them when you need them right now. They're dealing with, you know, these cell phone companies and all these other places to try to get this stuff done, they don't want, they don't want a part of it, they don't wanna get involved in it. So, you've got that working behind the scenes, and then you've got these two. So, they end up making this case, they make a great case, they make an arrest. The case is years in the making, it finally comes up, right? It finally comes up, and the two people, not the father, the two people, they're out in the streets, and they're, what, 15 years at least or more?
Well, at least 18.
Twelve, 15, or something? 12, 15 or something?
I don't think the schoolteacher got that.
Okay, sorry, no, he did. The schoolteacher got less, she got about 15 years. Either way, they're put out there in jail. But the main guy, Joe Colatte, the main guy, he said, no, I'm not taking a plea. They offered him 25 years. They offered him 25 years. He said, no. I don't know if it's because, you know, he's thinking small city, maybe these detectives don't have the ability to, you know, he's going to beat, beat the case or what. In terms of 25 years. Detective Valerie Blue was on a stand for two weeks. Folks, two weeks, get up in the morning, drive to court, on the stand, getting grilled by real high-priced attorneys and getting hammered and having known that, that not only are you staying, but the paperwork and the documentation that you've got, that Patty put together, that gave you the ability to make your case, all of that working together, remembering the details from years ago and going through that whole entire thing, he ends up, the jury goes out, they deliberate for $5 and becomes that guilty. 66 counts, means you've got two life sentences and you'll never see the light of day. I'll tell you what, that is impressive. And I even understand for, for what I thought were major cases at the time when I was doing it, I was on the stand for two days once and I thought, I was here, I thought, man, no we could do that. I mean, holy cow, it's a whole day, it's incredible. I can't even imagine the amount of time. But the last thing I want to say before I let them go and we wrap up is that we got three, Commander Hodge, you have three phone calls separately and within each other that called him to say what an incredible job she did and how important, just intelligent, you were stuck, did her homework, and it was absolutely positive. The joint effort between Rob Metchum, the work that Patty did and Valerie's working and testimony that put that guy where he belongs and had to jail the rest of the time. So I can't thank you too about it. Last couple of things I want to mention, I'm feeling pretty good. Feeling pretty good. I want to say there's no chance that she's out of her 30 minutes, because she doesn't have time to write it. So last thing I want to mention is, you know, the people, I mentioned that Linda's been here over 30 years, I've been over 30 years. Well, Brad, Commander Brad Hodge, just last Monday celebrated his 30-year anniversary as well. And I tell you what, that says something about our organization and it says something about our community and our state. And the best part about that is we've got Sherry here. And I'm really going to just say, the year that Sherry started working for the Silent Beach Fish Farm, you ready for this? 1979. Sherry started working here in 1979.
Yay, Sherry.
And the funny thing was, when she first started here, she was a dispatcher and ultimately became a dispatcher supervisor. And she's the one that hired me. I started in January 1987 as dispatcher and Sherry hired me. Every time I do something that makes her mad, she says, you know, that day, I wish I would have made another decision that day. But yeah, she, she just does an incredible job for us. And, you know, you see all this stuff up here, all this paperwork, all this background and documentation, and that's all Linda. And folks, you can't have, you can't do this kind of stuff and have these kind of people to talk about this kind of stuff without having Linda. I mean, but she researches, does everything. I've got everybody's, the date they were hired, how long they've been in, their shoe size, their kid's names. And I said, Linda, we don't, I don't have time to say all that stuff. And, and her philosophy's always been, and it's been impressive since the day I met her, is I would rather give you everything and have you not need it all than have you need one thing which you don't have. I don't know if it gets any better than that, and it does. And, you know, sometimes I feel bad that I don't say everything that she's got because of all the work she's done, but at least I get a chance to probably say thank you so much for everything. Last thing I want to say before I close, because I've got 45 seconds before I get drunk or have to lose a bet. We've got a very special guest. Chris Rusaski is a very, very good friend of mine. Chris Rusaski was a dispatcher here in the late 80s and was actually dispatcher here in 1990. I wish you'd say I remember that, but we remind, we remind you when we're talking about it. We're reminiscing yesterday. And we've been in contact for, for 30 years. And he still comes back to this community and he still comes into the office and he still talks about it. He reminisces about Sherry and about some of the people, Linda, that have been around. And he was supposed to go back to Miami and found out that we're having this tonight and wanted to see everybody and wanted here because he's just so still involved in the community, lives, has a house in Silent Beach. And I just want to say thanks for coming up and thanks for all of the... Thank you all so much. I really cannot tell you how proud I am to come to work every single day. And I can't tell you how proud you should be living in this community, knowing the people that you have here, watching these people work. I come to work every day and it's a pleasure, it really is. They're dedicated, they're hardworking, they're intelligent. It's awesome. It's an awesome, I tell people all the time, I've got the best job in the country, not because I come in, I get to watch them. So, folks, thank you so much for coming, I appreciate it, everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Just one second, please.
Not, not bad.
That's pretty darn good.
Yeah, way to go. Great job.
On behalf of the council and the citizens, I know a lot of times, the police department doesn't get the recognition out there and you don't hear what the citizens really have to say, but I can tell you, you're the reason people live here. Two things I always hear, it's a safe city and the schools. We wouldn't have great schools if it wasn't a safe city. And you're the main reason. And thank you. Very, very much. Great.
Good job, sir. Good job.
Great job, sir.
We'll take a five-minute break and then reconvene. I want to reconvene the city council meeting on March 21st, 2018. We'll move on to, or come back and we'll take agenda, thank you, John. Come back and take agenda item four, being city council comments.
I have nothing.
Same.
Same.
Nothing, okay. I have nothing. We'll move on to city attorney's report.
Nothing.
City managers' reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick thing before I get into the actual report. You received an email, all the council members received an email earlier today that included supplemental documents for the board meeting, or excuse me, the board interview meeting we just had, as well as this meeting. I sent a correcting email late in the day and wanted to clarify that two items that were included in there should not have been in the packet because they weren't related to any of the items on the schedule tonight. And those two items were the Tetra Tech results from the testing of the sand that has been put on the beach, as well as the Surf Rider PowerPoint presentation that they're, they're presenting at their meeting, which is happening right now, where they're talking about the results of the testing that we, we conducted. Those items are on our city website, they just weren't supposed to be part of this packet because they don't relate to any items. So I just wanted to clarify that. In the city manager's report, just a couple of upcoming events we wanted to draw your attention to. On Saturday, March 31st, the recreation department will host our annual breakfast with the Easter Bunny at Pelican Beach Park at 10:00 AM. And it's good for kids, first through sixth grade. It's $7 to participate, you know, they hunt for eggs, they watch the Easter Bunny come on a fire truck, it's a lot of fun. And you can purchase tickets at the recreation center.
Only 10 left.
Only 10 left? Okay, well, going fast. Okay. So get your tickets now, they're selling out. And the other item I just wanted to remind everyone about is that on Tuesday, and there's a typo in the city manager's report, it says Thursday, but Tuesday, April the 3rd, the 3rd is the right date, the city is hosting an infrastructure workshop. And if you'll recall, this is where we are, I'm going to talk about three things that are really important to the city. One is going to be the status of the City of Melbourne Water Service and their infrastructure. The second is going to be Brevard County and the Sewer Service and their infrastructure, which we know is a pretty important topic right now. And the third is going to be a discussion of the city's stormwater infrastructure and the situations that you're actually going to hear a little bit about tonight at a future agenda item. That is happening again Tuesday, April 3rd. It's going to be at the civic center at 6 o'clock and we encourage everyone to come out and hear those presentations and engage with us on those topics. In your packet, also you have an information, or a thank you letter from a resident that was sent on behalf of the fire department and specifically Eric Tippins, who helped her, a lady dealing with her husband who was ailing. And the last thing I wanted to mention that is not in the report, but is a request I have of you on behalf of Courtney, as we're gearing up for the citizen budget committee, we have determined that a good way for us to frame the discussion and build a framework for the committee members in evaluating our budget is to establish a set of city values. And so we're asking all council members to submit via email, you know, directly to Courtney and myself, a list of three to five values, you can call them attributes if you want, but values that you feel best represent the city. And the goal with this is we are going to use these values with the committee and we're going to ask them to, as they're evaluating expenditures and things that we're doing and services we're providing, we're going to ask them to compare those and see how they line up to the values. And that will help guide our discussion. And so our intention is to get these suggestions from you. We're also asking the city department directors to provide a set of values as well. And we're going to bring all that back to you on your April 4th meeting as an agenda item for you to review, discuss. And our, our goal is to hopefully get a fairly straightforward agreement on what those values should be. And then they'll be at our first citizen budget committee, committee meeting, which starts on April 19. So that's the concept. If you're in agreement with that, all I would ask is that you just email a set of values to myself and Courtney and we'll take it from there, but I'm happy to answer questions if you've got any.
Thank you. Questions for the city manager's report?
You would like us to have them to you by?
Well, I need it in time for the agenda on the 4th, so that would put us at Lenore the...
30th.
30th.
Young ladies of the 30th, 29th would be better.
Okay, March 29th.
Okay, next Thursday.
Thursday.
Okay, great. Any further questions? Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number nine, discussion of status of the 2018 stormwater master plan update by city engineer. This is Alan.
David, thank you.
Good evening. Welcome. Thank you. David King with QIH and Mead and Hunt Company. It's hard to say that, I've said Quinton Hampton Associates for so long, now merged with Mead and Hunt, it's harder to say, but I'm getting used to it. I know you have before you the council agenda item and also our attached memo, so I won't go through it completely, but just to give you some highlights, we are kind of midstream in the update of your stormwater master plan. You had, previous consulting engineer had completed one in 2001. We went forward, did a lot of projects off of that. In 2011, we did a stormwater quality master plan and that's where we focused on trying to address the Indiana Lagoon BMAP and what we would do to meet those pollutant goals. With this update, if you will, the master plan update, it's really to go back and look at the structures, the structural components of the stormwater system and figure out where, what the city needs to do going forward. So as the memo describes, or your agenda item and my memo, email describes, we've kind of broken up into three different needs. Renewal and replacement, that's basically when the aged infrastructure, the pipes and the structures get so old and only have so long of a useful life, they need to be replaced. The BMAP, as I mentioned before, there's, we're still, are on our way, it's a 15-year cycle that ultimately, at the end of the 15 years, we have to meet those pollutant loads reductions. And then of course, as everybody's near and dear to their heart, is flood alleviation and capacity conveyance improvements, where we're trying to move that water along. We're usually doing all three things at the same time. Anytime we take on a project, we've been working for you for 12 years, it's been, that's been the mode of operation. Every time we spend a dollar on stormwater, we're trying to spend it on, on all three needs. But renewal and replacement, you have about seven, a little less than 18 miles of pipe in your system right now. They range from six inches in diameter to an equivalent eight foot in diameter, there's some box culverts that are, that are up to that size. We went through, based on what the city knowledge, city staff knowledge, our knowledge and the records that we had available to us, we, we came up with about, a little over, about 5,400 linear feet of that 17 mile, 18 miles is in poor shape. And those, those pipes range between 12 and 36 inches. So some of the medium-sized pipes, if you will, within your system. From there, we, we estimated, you know, that we got to start tackling that, we have been tackling that, you'll, you'll continue to tackle that, of course. But if you targeted maybe like a five-year window to target that, at our estimation for just the pipe replacement itself, not the other things that usually goes along with it, is about $140,000 a year. And so we're pretty much complete with that phase, if you will, that part of the analysis. The other part of, of the, of the puzzle, if you will, is the, the Biden with the BMAP. And again, in 2011, we had a stormwater master plan, so we're not quality master plan, where we're looking at the quality of the stormwater, not just the quantity. We didn't, we're not redoing that, but from that, there was a estimation of about $8.5 million that would take over the course of 15 years to get close. If you, raw numbers, if you look at that, it's about $566,000 a year. And as what has been done in the past and what will continue to be done, of course, we'll be aggressive and the city will be aggressive in acquiring grants for a lot of that work. So if you assumed half of that was paid for by grants, which a lot of times we can get 50% and then some, that's about, along with that $140,000, I said, in the renewal replacement, that works out to be about $420,000 a year. That's in line with the, as your agenda item memo speaks to, about $400, $500,000 a year. The third piece of the puzzle is the flood alleviation and capacity conveyance. We're in the middle of modeling right now, we're remodeling the entire city, including all of the improvements that have been done over, ever since 2001, because in 2001, there was a modeling effort as well. We have combined some things, we've done, with some of the piping that we've done over the years, we have made some, a lot more things more efficient on the north, let's say the north basin, when we went and did that project, that alleviated a lot of problems up there. But there'll be more things that will come out of that modeling that will have to be part, you know, planned for, if you will. But like I said, usually when we're spending a dollar, we can get more bang for our bucks, we're doing everything. So if we're replacing a, a aged pipe, it's probably a smaller pipe, we'll replace it with a larger pipe and we'll also put some best management practice, you know, treatment abilities with that system that we built in and around that pipe. So, so I'm not really suggesting we add, you know, at this stage, because we're not done with it in the modeling, you know, we may come up that we will bump up our, our estimate of suggested funding even more, but still, right now, our target is going to be in the $400,000 to $500,000 range. So that's where we're, we are at currently. As Suzanne mentioned, April 3rd, we'll have a further presentation, we'll be further along in our modeling, hopefully complete with at least the critical parts of that and be able to start putting a bow on that stormwater master plan.
Questions from council?
I don't have got a couple. Go ahead, please.
Maybe it might be more for the budget and do we already have money set aside to budget in our budget right now for this type of stuff or is this something we're going to have to work in?
This, yeah, the reason we're bringing this up is because it would be extra dollars we would need. And this is the discussion we had at our budget workshop a couple of weeks ago, talking about the potential to increase the stormwater fee. So that's part of why we're just giving you more of this preliminary information, depending on the level of funding that council may decide to, to go for and the speed with which you want to try to address the issues, that would, that would have an impact on what stormwater fee rate change we might recommend to you.
And a quick question. It was just more of a question when I was reading on the BMAP compliance, you have that figure in there of about $8.4 million and what that, does that include the DeSoto stormwater project in that or is that outside of what we've already used and planned for with the DeSoto?
Yeah, the eight and a half was a, was a very rudimentary guess, but we had to, but, you know, when the BMAP came out, there was a lot, you know, what do we do? And that was what the, the quality master plan was there for. But that eight and a half million was actually estimated back in 2011 and we've done projects off of that. We're, we're getting ready to start DeSoto, the bids are due actually tomorrow, we've done Cassie, we've done other projects off that. So, and the city has done things and, and there's been movement within the BMAP to get additional credit, including your Indiana Lagoon funding and those projects that, with the shared credits. So there's, there's things that y'all are getting a credit for or have gotten credit for that, that would come off that eight and a half million, if you will. So I wouldn't, I'm not proposing that from this point forward, it was just a number that was proposed at that time.
Question. On the BMAP, because I know this was contention before, the figures we were working and could never get to what the state was.
Right.
Because of like ground order intrusion.
Correct.
And also haven't done a lot of reading on atmospheric. Is this playing into the BMAP? And is the state changing any of their guidelines on this to give us credit for new and innovative practices? Because it seems like there's some really neat things out there and we don't get credit for them because... for them because reasons unknown.
Yeah, there's neat things, there's questionable, you know, questions about how they develop their, their B map and then their allocations and where does all the pollutants actually come from? You know, there was a big push early on, you know, for, to address some of that. The county was leading that charge with the groundwater and what DEP's kind of done, because they're, they're doing B maps across, across the state and they're revisiting ours every, at minimum every five years, but they're doing annual updates, if you will, too, to see where everybody stands. So as, what we'll see is over time, some of those questions, some of that efforts to question some of the data, there's, there's an alternate model that the county was pushing for them to, and all the cities were pushing for them to accept, but since they had the established B map, they didn't want to kind of back up to start over again because they, again, they're doing this around the state. So it's going to need to be a constant push. They're learning everything, new things every time they do a new B map, every time we do one of these projects that are innovative and we get them the data, because a lot of our grant funding that we get, like our, like our DeSoto project, we have to do pre and post monitoring and evaluate how that project actually, actually works and how effective it is. So that data all goes back into the, to the mix. So they're, they're learning. We wish they were further along. We wish they didn't, you know, list, give the allocations that they gave, I wish it would have took a little bit more time, but they, they've been behind schedule from day one, they started the whole B map process, so.
And the atmospheric part of it, which is probably the hardest part of it?
It's, it all have different angles to it and that's, that's another part of it, too. I mean, you know, when you start, when they start peeling back some layers and analyzing a certain area, like let's say the groundwater, like the, they said, okay, well, what if we just, you know, play with the model and say, like, we treat every, all the stormwater to, you know, not to 100%, but to a high level, will that get us there? And the answer is no, because of all the groundwater. So it's, they took a certain look at it and they had to make a certain assumptions with the original B map. Many of the assumptions have been questioned. They are aware of that, they're acknowledge that, but right now, until they rewrite the B map, which is, you know, they kind of update it every five years, we won't know, so.
Thank you. Further questions from council for having public?
David, thank you. There might be some questions from the public if you could help us with. At this time, open up for public comment this agenda item. Here are no public comment. Any further council comment? There's no action required on this item. So David, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Moving on to agenda item 10, which is ordinance 1155. Jim?
Ordinance number 1155, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, updating the five-year schedule of capital improvements of the city's comprehensive plan as mandated by Florida statute section 163.3177 sub 3 sub B, providing a conflicts clause and severability clause, providing an effective date. It's a second reading of ordinance number 1155.
Motion to adopt ordinance number 1155, second reading.
I have a motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Councilman Gibson. This is the second reading. Any comment from council? Here are none at this time. Open up for public comment on agenda item 10. Here are none. Back to council, further? Here are none, Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Eric Cetina?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item 11, ordinance 1156. Jim?
It's pulled. It's postponed to the next meeting, the same thing with the next agenda item.
We didn't get it.
Eleven and 12 are noted in your agenda as being postponed to the next meeting because Florida today failed to publish the advertisement we sent them.
Oh.
So we had to delay it. I apologize for that.
Yeah, I, did we, did we, was that out? Okay.
It's under honor.
All right, thank you. We're moving to 13? We're moving to 13? Or, we're moving to agenda item 13, to take action on ordinance 1158.
Ordinance number 1158, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, recognizing and making findings regarding the public's longstanding customary use of the dry sand areas of the beaches, creating a new section 26 dash 1 Satellite Beach City Code, regulating dry sand areas of beach, clarifying which uses are permitted and prohibited for members of the public on the dry sand areas, providing for enforcement and penalties for violation, providing authority, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. It's a second reading of ordinance number 1158.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
To adopt ordinance number 1158 on the second reading.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gibson, second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion?
I just think it's super important that we do this, for sure.
Jim, does this supersede anything that, or shouldn't I ask that question?
We'll wait and see.
Okay.
Because it all depends on what the legislature, how the legislature words, whatever they're going to ultimately do.
Did the governor sign it yet?
Last I checked, he had not signed it.
Does this get in before that since he has not signed it?
I don't know what the verbiage in the law is, so.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't looked at the last iteration, so.
It was, the last version I saw was still a problem in terms of restricting access to the beaches, so, yeah.
Okay. At this time, no further, council? Open up for public comment and agenda item 13, ordinance 1158.
What would be a couple of things that would be prohibited?
Sir, just please, if you wouldn't mind, the procedure is, Steve, just come up and state your name and.
I'm just newbie to the beach, so what would be a couple of things that would be prohibited for the?
They could block off access to the beach. Like if you're walking down the beach, they could make the beaches private, essentially.
The high waters.
Well, certain parts of it, yeah.
Jim, you want to kind of give us what we know so far on this, which we really don't know a kind of a lot?
Basically, what the legislature was attempting to do was limit the ability of local governments to regulate the sandy beach, which is essentially between the mean high water line and the total of the dunes. And they're not totally precluding the ability to do it, but it's kind of a roundabout way and it's different than the way historically that the local governments have been able to regulate the beaches. It's almost as if there's a preemption, I mean presumption, excuse me, to public utilization of the sandy beach areas and the legislature's kind of looked at.
Okay, I was just curious.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If I'm not mistaken, isn't part of that, not so much on our beaches, but if you go like Cocoa Beach where, you know, it's a really wide beach, and that's the way it was at Fort Walton, right?
Let me, let's do this. Let's, can I continue with the public comment and then we can come back to the council? So I'm still, we'll take public comment on this agenda item. If you'd like to speak, please, the mic's open. You have to come up to it, though. Can't speak from the audience. Thank you. State your name and.
My name is Mary Ann Sinclair. I've been a resident of Satellite Beach, well, since I was a teenager. My parents were here in 1954. My dad was stationed at Patrick. I just wonder, what are the chances that this is going to pass? I mean.
I think one thing, it did pass and it's sitting on the governor's desk for signature. And that was kind of part of my comment is, does this supersede it because we, it hasn't been signed yet, so.
It's up to the governor.
Well, the governor put it down. I think one of the comments I heard, and I'll leave this to my city attorney, he said, let the courts decide, was one of the comments.
Well, no, that, no, it's, that, let the courts decide is something, is something different than the question you're asking. You're asking, at least I think what you're asking is, actually, I don't know what you're asking.
I'm saying, there was two parts to it. My one question was, does this supersede it because we had it on the books prior to it's signed? And the other part is, what he said was, he'll sign it and let the courts figure out what the high mark and.
Okay. Well, those are two different issues. Okay, so the issue is, is that, which is what the legislature did with, for instance, the short-term rentals, was they, essentially, we had to have something in place by whatever dates in the legislation, and I haven't seen the last iteration about what's in the legislation. Historically, what they've done is they picked a number like a year ago, so to speak, and said that it had to be in place a year ago, which basically knocked out the local government's ability to go do something once they had a bill go, you know, into the, into the, into the legislature for consideration. So that's, that's where, that's that issue. That's why I'm saying, I don't know the answer to that, because it depends on what line in the sand, so to speak, the legislature put in the legislation.
What about sea turtle nesting? If they fence in, and I mean, when I bought my house, I knew exactly what size my lot was. How can they suddenly say, oh, their lot goes all the way out to the high tide mark?
Great point.
That's what the law, that's what the law, that's what the law is. You own, you, you own to the mean high water line when you own oceanfront property.
And.
Wherever, wherever that, wherever that may be, but that's what, assuming that you own that lot, too. I mean, you own a lot.
Yes.
There's platted lots on the beach and you own to that mean high water line. The thing is that there's a lot of subdivisions in the city that some of those lots aren't there anymore. So it's receipt, the shoreline's receded and so the land is actually moving backwards so different people could ultimately own some of those lots.
Well, if the ordinance passes and they get to own all the way to the high watermark, high tide mark, will they pay for re-nourishment of the beach on their land?
I can't answer that question.
Do they know that?
I can't answer that question because I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that they're responsible to do that, because that's not part of what the deal is. There are, there are provisions in the, in the statute that allow beachfront property owners to quote unquote protect their property by taking certain actions, by getting permits from DEP. For instance, they could put a seawall up.
Way down? Put a seawall way down?
Again, wherever, wherever, wherever DEP allows them to put the seawall.
I can't believe that this will pass. It can't possibly. Let's keep our fingers crossed, everyone.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Floor is still open on agenda item 13. Any further public?
Let me, let me make one other point.
Please.
Again, this is my recollection, because I haven't looked at the, the last iteration that I looked at for, it's been probably three or four weeks, but my recollection is, is it's not that you're precluded from it, it's just in order, what they're, what the legislature is doing is, is they're siding more with the property owners than they are with the local governments and it's not precluding the local governments from having the courts make a determination on a case-by-case basis that the public has the customary use for certain areas of the, of the sandy beach. But it, it's putting, it, like I said, it's flipped, it's flipped the coin, so to speak, about where the presumptions were before, and now they're going more with the property rights of the property owners and they've changed what the presumptions were. So now the burden's going to be on the local governments to establish the customary use, basically in court, unless the property owners are agreeable to it.
Okay, thank you. Again, floor is still open for public comment. Here are no further. Back to council.
The only thing I was just saying is, is the way it was explained to me is, again, not so much on our beaches, but if you go to like Cocoa Beach where the beach is really wide, so where the dune is way up by the condo, but the high watermark is, you know, could be 50 yards towards the beach. And people can currently use that part of the beach to walk through or put your lawn chairs on or whatever, but should this pass, basically this is that property owner can say, that is all my lot, all the way down to the high tide mark, and if I don't want people to walk on that beach, I own that property, that's my right. Does that sound about?
Again, assuming that they own the lot that abuts.
Right.
The beach.
Right.
If they don't, if, you know, because some, some plats don't.
Go that far.
Some plats don't go out that far.
Right.
Because some of the platted lots that you look at all plats here.
Right.
It's like you have the last lot, so to speak, and, you know, the plat, the lots are about this big, but the ones that are beachfront are like this long, so they, they were the ones that went out as far as the beach.
So that, you know, great example is Pride Park, or Galley by the Sea, where there was another set of lots, buildable lots to the east of the existing houses there. They're no longer there or portions of them.
Right.
Okay. Further discussion? I'm sure this will be here a few more times. Lenore?
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes.
Eric Cetina?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item 14, which is resolution 999. Jim?
Resolution number 999, a resolution of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, establishing policies, procedures, and fee schedule for use of Satellite Beach facilities, repealing resolution number 987, providing an effective date. It's a reading ordinance, or, excuse me, resolution number 999.
Thank you. Kathy?
At the last meeting, the recreation board discussed the request of an increase to recreation. Most of the first changes were made to the facilities. Directly, I'm hoping to stop now. These are the increases that have been made. The margins increased to $25. Additionally, the board is proposing an increase to the user fee for the gym weekend, the gym from $1.50 per person, $2.00 per person, and an increase to the membership fee for the gym from $30 for individuals, $50 for families, and $50 for individuals. These changes are in line with other comparable facilities in the South American area, and these should, should affect the department's budget by about $10,000 dollars in the next year. And staff is recommending that these, these are the effects of the program.
Thank you. Is the usage still as strong, if not stronger, on our facilities?
Yes.
Any questions from council?
She's right, it's been a while since we've done this, so certainly seems reasonable. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 999.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Councilman Osmer on the resolution 999. Further questions from council?
One of the board applicants, Tristan, he made a comment about the tennis fees. I don't see those on here. Is that something that we could, would that be part of?
I think they're actually the last ones that were in season. We didn't really discuss those.
Maybe talk, I mean, he made a pretty good valid point, I thought.
I think these are here.
Okay.
Definitely to be comparative, I mean, especially when we're looking at, we're needing more.
Yeah, I, I'm not for it, really, to be honest, that. Here's why. Well, it's got to cover itself somewhat, but if you look at the recreation facilities here, I think they have to be reasonable. You know, I really don't want to compare it to what the Kiwi club does, because we're not a club, we're a city facility. We don't charge for baseball fields. We don't charge for the soccer, you know, soccer fields or football fields. We didn't charge for the skateboard park, because our idea was, we'd rather have the kids there than skateboarding around and wear dollars. You know, if a kid, you know, you'd think everybody that lived in the town could afford it, but maybe there's some kids that couldn't. We didn't want to keep those kids from being able to use the facility. So I think that was one of the main reasons we didn't charge for the skateboard park we did. So I just want to make sure when we look at things like that, we're not. From the old school, because I, you know, I remember the sign very well, because I sat in that office, probably because I wanted to, but I had to, in Mayor Hitchcock's office, put a ball in the kid's hand and take the brick out. put a ball in the kid's hand and take the brick out. So I'd rather the people use it. That is my thing, and, you know, as long as it's reasonable, I'm comfortable with it because I think that's one of the things that we have in our city is our recreation and that if it's reasonable, kids can use it.
We do currently charge for tennis, right?
Well, we do, right.
We charge for resident and non-resident tennis courts, and, and the reason these are the fees that we focused on was because looking at all the other fees compared to similar facilities, we were already in line with those, so those didn't really need to be.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, that's.
And I, don't we also have to be a little careful on some of this because we have user agreements with some of the property and how we acquired some of the property, A being?
Right. So tennis is the only one that would charge you to, resident and non-resident, because there's not direct funding that, if there's, depending on where we get funding to do some recreation facility, you can't charge different fees for resident than you for non-resident.
Okay.
Open up for public comment on this agenda item. Here are none, back to council. Here are no further, one more?
Senator Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, motion passes. Kathy, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 15, and before we start that, we did get a couple of updates from Lenora, one being just a letter strongly supporting this resolution from Surf Rider. And I know also the National, Surf Riders also liked it very, very much. And also, Councilman Montanaro has asked for a couple wordsmithing on the third whereas and the eighth. So if you take that in consideration when you redo this, okay? Jim?
Resolution Number 1000, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, making findings regarding current issues with beach erosion and alternatives to address same, supporting a statewide managed coastal retreat policy and funding support for critically eroded areas, supporting the maintenance of healthy dune systems, supporting the need to avoid beach armoring for the long-term protection of sea turtles and other coastal-dependent wildlife, providing an effective date.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I give a brief overview?
Please.
Just briefly, the purpose of this resolution is to take one step further in the direction of making sure we're, we're being good stewards of beachfronts. As, as you may know, we talked about it, our, one of our last meetings, there are really three options available to address the issue of coastal erosion that are available to folks. One is purchasing beachfront property, that's something the city could do, but we don't have a funding source for it. Another is to allow armoring, which we're not in favor of because of the impact to the natural habitat and the impact on sea turtles and other naturally occurring environments. And the third is beach nourishment, which the county is currently undertaking. In our discussions of all of these, these options and the impact of each, we've, we've recommended with this resolution that we basically ask the state to try to get serious about establishing what we call coastal retreat policy and funding that goes along with that, which would essentially provide a funding source from the state for local governments to purchase beachfront property and to secure the rest of the city by, by build, buying that up and securing the environment that way. If we don't do that and we do beach nourishment or we do armoring, there are various challenges that are associated with that. So the purpose of this resolution is to simply encourage the state to take those necessary actions because it is the state rules that we fall under and we can't take any additional actions unless they make a move in the right direction. And as the mayor said, I just want to reiterate, Surf Rider has given us a very strong letter of support and in fact, I'm covering the meeting tonight because our city manager, Courtney Barker, is at their meeting to talk about this resolution and other things related to the beach nourishment project. And that's all, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 1000.
Before, did you look at Dominic's?
Yes, I was just gonna say, I'm gonna say, as amended with his suggestions or?
That's up to the council, I mean, that's why everybody look at him. Jim, did you take a look at the?
I'm okay with him.
The first one, I don't have an issue with. The second one, I'm not sure makes the sentence sound better, but that's up to you.
Okay. Other than that, it doesn't change number eight one way or the other?
No.
Let me leave eight. It's up to you.
So are you taking the first but not the second on your motion?
I'll take the first but not the second.
And then I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilman Osmer, second by Councilman Breimer. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 15.
Given what's been going on, especially with the ambassador meetings, you've been at them, I really am strongly supportive of the business supporting statewide managed coastal retreat policy, and that's more than just money. There are some, or, and I think when you get some of the proposals for ordinances, you're going to find that there's a very fine line between the devil and the deep blue sea having to do with the law. There's a bunch of the law that very much limits what a local government can do. And this at least is opening up the dialogue to say, we have to start talking about modifying the law. Unfortunately, the legislature and its infinite wisdom on the beach access is moving in the wrong direction. So I don't think this is necessary information for you guys, but I just thought it was good to have it on the record that it's important to start this dialogue on the law as it relates to adapting to what's happening.
Thank you. Public comments still open? Here are no further public comment, back to council comments. I know Courtney is there and has worked pretty hard on this resolution to at least start the dialogue and to look at these things. So, and I think she's done a great job on it and got an organization behind us that has been in the past, you know, very outspoken on it, which, you know, I'm glad they were and hopefully we can get other people to see this. Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item 16, discuss, take action on renewal of agreement between the City of Satellite Beach and public financial management for financial advisory services. Thank you. Brittany, thank you.
It would be, the recommendation that we're looking for is a public financial management agreement was originally signed back in March of 2016. It was a three-year agreement and within that agreement, we had the ability to agree for another year for three more years. So we'll bring this back again next year if we want to continue with it. The last time we used them was back in 2015, we did the utility tax note, and I had done a brief conversation with them and some of the debt consolidation that we're talking about bringing to you in April of 2018. So it would be our staff's recommendation to, to continue this service with them as we don't use them very often and they are very helpful in the situation.
Brittany, thank you very much. Questions? At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 16.
I'm Paul Cannon, I'm a resident of Satellite Beach. Is there a fee attached with this? A maintenance fee to this agreement?
There's only a fee if we actually use the service.
Okay. Do you know the hourly rate or?
Do you have that offhand? Is it in the agreement? There are a variety of fees in the agreement, Mayor, and some of the fees are hourly, some of them are a calculation based on the value of the transaction. The purpose of this is to have this agreement in place in the event that we need to do some sort of more significant, you know, financial planning, like take on debt for a project, something like that, it's good to have financial advisors and, you know, available to work with.
But there's no retainer attached to it?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you'd like, in the council packet, the fees and the schedule is listed. Further public comment on Agenda Item 16? Here are none, back to council.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the public financial management incorporated agreement for financial buyer services for an additional one-year term.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Osmer, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Any further discussion? Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item 17, please look over, that's our agenda for our April 4th meeting. Remember, we do have one on April 3rd also. Okay? Anything else that needs to go on or we'd like to see, please get with Courtney.
What was April 3rd?
April 3rd is the workshop, I'll just call it that, infrastructure.
Okay.
Melbourne County and the city presentation.
I thought that was.
Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 18, appointments to boards. My recommendation to start is to get the ones, the low-hanging fruit.
Well, I was gonna say.
We got Steve.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I want me to make a motion on appointing him to the Sustainability Alternate member's the only one that's available, unexpired term of one, nine, 2020.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion, any further comment?
No.
Steve Gillum, is that what your motion?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes. Okay, moving to the applicants for the Citizens Budget Committee, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, plus the four, so we have 11, is that your count, Lenore? I just want to make sure we got the right count for the right.
Eleven, that's what I'm saying, eleven.
I'm just waiting for her to make sure that 11 is the correct number so we don't leave anybody out.
Sure enough.
Okay, thank you. It's a, my feeling, it's a short-term board, so if we have five or seven members on it, I, I think it's, to me, good. Because the way I look at it is, I'd like to get more people involved that we haven't gotten involved in the past to see the budget. When you looked at it for the number of years that you and I have looked at it, you know, you get tunnel visions, what are some other things out there that people could look at? I also know that some of the people here are incredibly hard workers for the city, but they're on numerous other boards. So my personal feeling is, I want to see people who are not on boards to start and then fill in where we go, just because I think the idea behind this with Courtney was to get the community involved and get some different opinions. So that's just, you know, my feeling there. So however you guys would like to handle it.
If I can offer something here. I, I think you hit it with the, with the four that are already on boards and we also have seven that we have tonight that we interviewed. I thought that was a very talented group. And I know that seven can be a little bit unwieldy, but again, I think we've got a good group here and so I would, I would support the idea of having seven, and I can read off seven names that I wrote down tonight from this group that we can go with if you want.
Let me add one thing, I believe at this time, and Lenore, you might need to verify this for us, there's only two of the applicants that are actively on boards at this time.
Mr. Justine, he's no longer serving.
Correct.
He used to serve on sustainability.
All right. So just, we can do it individually, however everybody likes to do it.
If you, again, well, I'll let Mandy go ahead and say her thing.
Well, I, I agree and I disagree a little bit, I do think that there's some good knowledge with the two that are actually serving on boards, too, and I get the idea of having, but I do think a good mix use of people that have, have some background or knowledge on it might be important to add, you know, to it. I mean, I have my own list of seven, so I think maybe we just go through it and fill it down, like whatever you guys.
I can, I, it's not, have you got anything?
No.
I can, I can call out my list in the motion form and we can add, subtract, if that's all right with you, Mr. Reese.
Please.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion for the, what's the, what's the, the Citizen Budget Committee to appoint the following seven people to this committee. Desiree Call, Kevin Recar, Nellie Sims, Cindy Berger, Tristan Kattenberg, Kathleen Mahler, and Andrew Shore. Those are the seven that, that fit the new, new criteria, so just take, okay?
So those are seven? We want to do it in, again, if we have where we want to have a different makeup. So, again, everybody has a vote?
I just have to say, I feel a little, and I know you guys, Mayor may not, I feel strongly that Larry should be on this board, I feel he has a really extensive background and knowledge and a good mindset that he could definitely bring to the table. He was one of my ones and I want to, pretty on key with you.
Okay. I guess there's another way to do this, too. It would take a second, but if you would pass out on a sheet to vote all the names and then as a council, we vote and the top seven vote-getters get on. I think that's the only way so we don't have to go through each individual. So your list would have as much of play as anybody because we would just be voting on seven. Tally up the votes, if there's a tie, we'll work on it. Is that?
Works for me.
Okay. So.
Well, I'll go ahead and, with all my motion, okay?
Thank you. Let me do this, let's go on to the city minutes and we'll pass them and then we'll get the vote sheets and we'll vote, if that's good for council. Is that good?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Do we have a motion to adopt, city, moving on to Agenda, excuse me, number 19, the adoption of minutes?
Still move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Breimer, second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion? Karen Dunn, Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, motion passes. At this time, we'll take just a couple-minute recess while we get the names voted or vote paper here and then we'll come back, vote. All right.
Yeah, we're gonna be here all night, otherwise, then you don't want to.
I wrote this in mine here. I wrote it even earlier.
Are you ready?
Yes.
I wanted to get my mind.
I'm reconvening our meeting and at this time, we will be writing down the names of who we are voting for. Thank you.
Jim, we have to sign this, too, right?
Right.
Okay. Will we pass this to Lenore, is that correct?
You're gonna have to read your list.
Okay.
Unless it hasn't changed.
Mine has not changed.
Okay. Yes. Oh, I'll be done in a second, I'm sorry. I want to make sure I got everything.
Well, here. Don't kick the wire, that's important. Now we know.
The trap set up my curtain.
Talked about that afterward.
Okay, and we said the way now was?
Answer both, and then have a motion to accept the results.
Okay. At this time.
The top seven vote-getters.
Okay, so each of those will announce. Okay. Steve?
So, my seven are Desiree Call, Kevin Reclaire, Cindy Berger, Tristan Kattonberg, Andrew Schler, Millie Sims, and Larry Whitney. On my list.
Who else should tally it? Okay, mine is the same, I'll read it out again. Desiree Call, Kevin Reclaire, Millie Sims, Cindy Berger, Tristan Kattonberg, Kathleen Marler, and Andrew Schler. I have to sign it, it was, that's on my notes, so.
Jeff Chastain, Desiree Call, Kevin Reclaire, Larry Whitney, Cindy Berger, Andrew Schler, and Millie Sims.
Okay. Desiree Call, Kevin Reclaire, Cindy Berger, Kathleen Marler, Andrew Schler, Jeff Chastain, Larry Whitney. Right, once he gives it to me, then I'll do that. Right?
And Mr. Mayor, tabulating, whoever is not appointed, we may want to look at wanting to another board. So, if we don't just leave that person hanging out. No.
It'll be two out.
Yeah, or two out, yes, correct. Yes, she's right, Mindy's right. So, just to throw that out there, too, certainly take care of that.
We have any openings, though?
Board of Adjustment, Beautification Board, Sampson Island has two members. A primary and alternate.
So, do you want me to tally, tally the number, or the?
Tell me the seven.
Desiree Call, Kevin Reclaire, Cindy Berger, Andrew Schler, Kathleen Marler, Larry Whitney, and then you have the three-way ties, that would be Jeff Chastain, Millie Sims, and Kattonberg.
Lenore, can you double-check your count on Kathleen Marler? And maybe run through that one more time for me, I'm just double-checking.
I have a Mayor Patina voter for her, a Councilman Osmer voter for her, Breimer voter for her.
So, if we got three, wait a second. If there's three votes out of four.
Can you read Steve's out for me real quick? All of his?
Doesn't make sense.
Uh-uh.
I have Desiree Call, Kevin Reclaire, Cindy Berger, Tristan Kattonberg, Andrew Schler, and Millie Sims.
So, there's no Kathleen Marler on that?
Actually, I'm sorry, I actually heard Marler, so.
So, we have six and one, three-way, we have a tie, two-two.
Still have the tie. Three-way tie, it would be Chastain, Kattonberg, and Marler.
Hold on. Jeff? Who else was it?
Tristan Kattonberg. So, you need, right now, you need a motion to accept what we had, and we gotta deal with the second part of that, right?
Right.
Make that motion to accept the tabulations, scores, as presented by the city clerk.
I have a motion by Councilman Breimer, I have a second by?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Gibson. Further discussion on that? Okay. Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Patina?
Yes, motion passes. Okay. Now, we gotta break the three-way tie.
It's due by paper again, right?
We can vote on. We can vote.
So, which were the three?
Jeff, Chastain.
Okay.
Tristan.
Tristan.
Kattonberg.
Kattonberg.
Kathleen Marler.
For me, I was, when I was talking to Kathleen, I don't know if we're open for discussion, I'm just gonna start talking.
Yep.
She's a lot of heart, she's a really good person, but I thought for her, maybe the Beautification Board or some of the other long-term board that she could regularly do to get her, with her son and everything. For me, I thought that she would be better served in something like that, which is the reason why I didn't vote for her initially. And Jeff has been very invested into our community, and he is not serving on any other boards. He has a business, I was leaning towards him. Tristan was a very interesting character, but he's also not invested into the community long-term. So, that's where I'm coming from with those three, that's my personal opinion, I would pick Jeff, if I can do that.
Comment? Anybody else?
I would go with Jeff.
Gotta make a motion.
Make a motion for Jeff Chastain to be the seventh member on the Citizen Budget Committee.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gibson, second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion? Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Patina?
Yes, motion passes. I believe we got our seven members.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, can we, can we look, I mean, we may not have anything that fits, but can we at least look and see if we can do something with these other folks?
Fill them in, I like to fill them in. Okay, so, we have a Beautification and a Sampson Island. We do have a Board of Adjustment.
Do you have a Board of Adjustment?
Firstly, I'm not sure whether these are qualified for the Board of Adjustments, the group. I would have to, you know, think on that one. So, I'd like to, you know, see if there's other applicants that, Board of Adjustments is, you know, boy, you gotta have some history of working on the city, I think. So.
Well, I would just say that on the Sampson Island, it is a working board, so whoever that is needs to be prepared to go out.
A suggestion?
No, I don't, I don't want to suggest what that goes through, but.
We send it back out.
Here's my suggestion on it. Why don't we, the remaining, send back out and see if they would like to serve on one of the boards we have an opening on? We've already interviewed them, we don't have to interview them again. Bring them back at the next, past the first meeting.
Right.
And vote on.
Yeah.
And that way, we ask them, here's the boards we had open, you didn't get on that board, but we'd like you to be in touch with the city and see which ones are interested.
I'd just say that, I would like to have their buy-in before I arbitrarily put them on some. Just because some of these boards are a little bit more difficult than others, and I want to make sure they're all good with it.
Consensus on that?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Any further business before council? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody, thank you for staying.